This is our annual town meeting in Laurel after the legislative session to bring interest and citizens up to date on what went on during the legislative session, answer questions about issues we worked on, and hear concerns that we ought to be working on going forward. Delegates Frush and Barnes, who work with Delegate Penny Melick and I very closely, were not able to be with us tonight, but we share everything that we learned from tonight with them. They do meetings where sometimes one of us can't attend, and so they let us know what's going on, but we work very closely as a team. I do want to recognize Councilman Mike Lesz from the city of Laurel and Councilwoman Donna Crary from the city of Laurel. And I think you don't have a quorum, I think it's both of you. We're glad you're here, I only say that because sometimes issues come up involving the city, and they're happy to try to address those as well. Let me just start by saying that the big issues in this session obviously were new governor got elected, new legislature got elected, so part of it was just getting to know each other and working together. Obviously, when you have new folks elected, they'll have different priorities, and so part of the issue during the session was trying to come to agreement, the legislature and the governor, on some of those priorities. We put great emphasis over a long period of time, but particularly over the last eight years, in investing in education, investing in the environment, and a whole variety of -- and transportation, which I want to talk a little bit more about. And so when the governor came in and proposed a budget that would have cut education funding substantially, and some other areas, that became a huge source of contention. And the governor said, and the legislature said, "We wanted to work in a bipartisan fashion," and I think we all did make the effort to. We were able to restore a number of the governor's education budget cuts, we were able to restore a number of his health care cuts, but we ended the session without an agreement on a piece of the education funding that's very important for Prince George County, very important for Laurel. Where that stands at this point is, the budget that we passed provides the money for the governor to fully fund education, but under our constitution, he has the authority to not spend the money, this particular amount of money on education. And so we're all urging him to take the money that is in the budget that's paid for in a balanced budget and spend it on education, because that money will come directly back to Laurel and to all of Prince George County to help with our local schools. Another area that we did a lot of work on this session, and Delegate Barbara Frush is really our leader on this, she's the chair of the Environment Subcommittee in the House, was environmental legislation. We passed legislation for the first time to put a temporary moratorium on fracking for oil and gas in Maryland. It's a big issue around the country, a big issue in the United States. We put a two-year moratorium requiring the Department of the Environment to complete a series of studies on the environmental effects of fracking, and then come back with some tough regulations to protect the public. We also made some changes to the stormwater management fee, which everyone's heard a lot about. Under the state's agreement with the federal government, we have to reduce our stormwater runoff from our parking lots, just as we're reducing sewage from our sewage treatment plants going into the bay, just as we're doing other things to clean up the bay. And Prince George County and the other big eight counties in the state were given authority to create a stormwater management fee to help pay for cleaning up that pollution. Very controversial, understandably, and so we passed legislation this year actually unanimously, we came together with the governor, to basically say that localities that don't want to fund cleanup of stormwater through the stormwater management fee and want to pay for it some other way, and there are at least two counties that have expressed an interest in doing that, have the right to do that, but they still got to clean up the pollution. And so if they want to take it out of another pocket, they can do that. Now that obviously competes with other priorities, so those are tough decisions for people to make. But we also, at the same time, strengthened the requirements on the local governments to actually clean up the pollution. So we ended up with both the environmentalists and the governor and everyone else sort of saying, "We're giving the county more flexibility, but we are not reneging on our commitment to clean up the bay." Last thing I want to mention is some specific things here relevant to Laurel. We worked with the city council and got legislation to allow state money that we had actually gotten during the last session, which had not been spent yet, to finish the work on additional renovation of the recreation center at the Armory in Old Town. The city's been working on that for a long time, we've gotten state money repeatedly for that, and we were able to keep that investment going. We also fought hard and successfully so far to keep the commitments for improving transportation, particularly the MARC service that comes through Laurel. Two years ago, when we passed the biggest transportation package in 22 years in Maryland, Delegate Penny Melick and Frush and Barnes and I insisted that we had to know exactly what investments were going to be made in this area. And the biggest direct one for the city of Laurel was adding more trains to MARC coming through Laurel. And I'm glad to say that, A, the money is still in the budget, but B, the additional service, which is an additional train in the morning, and then two trains that come through Laurel, they don't go all the way to Baltimore, but they go all the way to Washington, pardon me. Those trains were added in March of this year, and they're running today, or tomorrow. They also added to the whole fleet of MARC about 50 new double-decker cars, modern cars. So that's obviously good in terms of capacity, more people can ride on the same trains, but it's also just good in terms of quality of service. So, pardon me?
You want to tell the public on later?
Good, excellent, well, right here, they unload right here, that's exactly right, that's exactly right, we're here. So, let me just stop there. The Laurel --
Local, local, local.
Oh, yes, 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 and one other local, thank you very much, another Laurel issue. Again, the city council has worked really hard to redevelop the old Laurel Mall into the Laurel Town Center, that I hope everyone's had a chance to go one place or another, it's incredible. In fact, too many people are going, it's hard to get a parking place, but it seems to be quite a hit. Well, one of the things we wanted to do was to attract restaurants there, good restaurants there, and I think there are some good new restaurants there. And so last year, we got several liquor licenses authorized for those restaurants. The city came back to us and said, "Well, one of them, they wanted to convert into more of an upscale liquor store as part of the complex," and so we got that legislation passed this session, part of the continuing effort to just improve the business community and the environment for people to live and shop and work here in the city. So with that, let me stop and ask my colleague, Delegate Penny Melick, to come up and talk about everything else that went on during the session that I didn't cover.
He did, he does pretty well, so, you know, in all fairness, I think that it's a lot easier when you're sitting down to say, "Okay, let's cover this," because you went first, so, you know, thank you for doing that. Good evening, how are you?
Great.
Oh, come on, guys, how are you?
Great.
All right. I know some of us haven't eaten yet, but we're going to act like we have, right? Thank you for coming out on, you know, a Monday evening, and we really appreciate it, especially during dinnertime. We always look forward to coming in front of you to give you an update of what we do during the session. You won't know the bills that we pass unless we tell you, and you won't know to take advantage of them unless we tell you. In every session, we're in, actually, in session for 90 straight days, January to April, for 90 days, over 2,500 bills get introduced, okay? So you really need to stay on top of it, we are not going to even cover, you know, 2% of it, but you can go to the Maryland General Assembly website, you can type the topic in there, it does a search, and it tells you, it searches for you, it tells you what we pass regarding health, education, the environment, economics, business, you name it, budget, and you can find it. And if you have any questions, you can always contact our office as well. So basically, Jim went through the budget with you and told you what we did. We did pass the budget, Maryland does have and maintain still a AAA bond rating, which is, you know, I think we want to eight, if I'm not mistaken, states out of 50, and that is the highest bond rating, the highest sort of credit score you can have, like as a person, if you have an 800 and something, you know, credit score, that's amazing, well, Maryland has that, and we've been able to maintain that because of the decisions, some of them which have been tough that we have made in order to stay competitive and provide services to the people in Maryland. The budget bill, House Bill 270, contained over $6.1 billion for K-12 education, okay? It contained also $5.53 billion for public colleges and university as well. The capital budget, which deals with school construction, actually had over $280 million for school construction from K-12, and it also had over $437 million for higher education construction. And that is important to us, because people want that in order to stay here, okay? And then basically, what we also did, we passed a bill that dealt with charter schools, and what it did was, it basically directs that most charter schools have to be under the local authority of the local, you know, Board of Education, because they are public schools, but they have to have the same rules that the public education schools have as well. We, you know, that in Maryland and in a lot of states, you cannot sell to minors, sell cigarettes to minor. How many of you have seen those new e-cigarettes, right? Basically, they're being sold to minors. So we passed a bill, House Bill 489, that prohibits the sale of the new e-cigarettes to minors, I think it's 489, I can't even read my handwriting, but it is, that is basically what it does, okay? And Senate Bill 937 bans the sale of powdered alcohol, and we found that out immediately in, like, the week that we were going to end session, we immediately passed that bill to ban the sale of that. And you have all been following, you know, it's very sad, what has happened in Baltimore City, okay? And that can be a discussion for weeks, for days, for years. And I can tell you that Maryland passed Senate Bill 482, which allows police officers to have cameras on their bodies. And then in Maryland, we have the wiretapping laws that prohibit you from listening to someone's conversation. However, we passed an exemption for the police officers to be able to listen to the audio as well, so they'll be able to have the cameras on their bodies and have the audio on as well. For those of you that are veterans, any veterans in the House, we passed a bill that says that we doubled the veteran, the exemption for military requirement from 5,000 to 10,000, okay? So the first $10,000 will be tax-free, and that is, you have to be over 65 years old, and that is, went into effect because it was an emergency bill. So please take advantage and tell people about it as well. We passed House Bill 130, and House Bill 130 allows for the African-American preservation, okay? Basically, what it does is, it allows for us to preserve historical sites, dealing with the African-American culture, and we passed that bill this session as well. On a personal note, I actually introduced 17 bills, eight of them passing to law, one of them basically does the following, thank you, there was a, and you know, all my bills, my 21st district delegates and senators support all my bills, and they get to co-sponsor and vote on it. We basically, I found out, I got an email from a woman, actually, that lives in the district here, and actually, she lives in Bellesville, her daughter attended Laurel High School, and she noticed that her daughter was very depressed, and that her grades have gone down, and she called the guidance counselor three times, didn't get a response. Her daughter basically asked her, "Can she go to CBS to buy her some sanitary napkins?" The mom was gone 45 minutes, when she came back, her daughter hung herself in front of the banister. She brought her down, she died two days later, her name was Lauren. So she emailed my office, and I went and met her with Councilwoman Mary Lehman, and those of you that know Mary, her brother also killed himself about three years ago, so this is an issue very important to her. So Mary and I met at Starbucks with her around 9 o'clock at night, we started to talk to her, her mom's name is Linda, I'm sorry, my allergies are really bad, it's Linda, and basically, she told us the story, Starbucks closed at 10 o'clock, we went into my car, we stayed there till almost 1:00 in the morning, and afterwards, I said to her, "I'm going to look and see what is the requirement for counselors when they renew their licenses, and to see if they can take a course on mental health." You know, guidance counselors are very overworked, they have thousands of students, and there aren't that many at those schools. However, in Maryland, when they renew their license, they have to renew their license every five years. And every five years, in order to keep their license fresh and up to date and current, they have to take six credit hours. Those credit hours can be on anything, it can be basket weaving, you know? It can be, if you have a student that is an interim in your office, that counts as three hours out of the six. So I put in a bill with the support of my colleagues that says that when you renew, and it's every five years, so it's not burdensome, that one of those six credits has to be on mental health, and addiction, and depression. So it passed the House and the Senate, and we called it Lauren's Law. Her mom came, gave testimony, and we are, you know, very happy that it passed, and it would honor her. And it takes a lot for her to come and tell that story in front of people, it breaks your heart, okay? Another bill that I put in deals, is called Carrie's Law. Carrie was a woman, young woman in her 30s, who had three kids, she lived in Texas, she was going through a divorce, and basically, she went to the hotel where her soon-to-be ex-husband was, who had three kids, they were very young, okay, under the age of nine. She went into the bathroom with her husband, they got an altercation ensued, and he started to stab her. Her nine-year-old tried to call 911 from the hotel, and guess what happened? Four times, she could not call, the call did not go through, because you have to dial 9. When we teach our kids to call the police, we say 911, not 911, 9911. And a lot of buildings, like our building in the General Assembly, you have to dial 9 to get out, okay? Like someone in our building on the second floor, he actually fainted, and we could not dial direct from the number, we had to call the state trooper to come, because we couldn't even do that. So I put in a bill that says that when you have a multi-line phone system, right, that you cannot have that code, that you have to be able to dial direct to call the first responder, the police. And basically, it's not expensive, it's just a matter of coding, like to fix hours in the General Assembly, it's $142, all right? So it's called Larry's, Carrie's Law, and the governor signed it into law two weeks ago. And I get bill ideas from other states, from people like you, and we work them. The other bills I put in deal with health care, as you know, I am the new chair of the House Public Health Committee and Disparity Committee, Public Health and Disparity Committee, and we dealt a lot this session, we put a lot of bills that deal with heroin addiction, because believe it or not, more people in the state of Maryland are dying from heroin addiction than from car accidents, plain and simple, okay? So we put a bill that creates a commission, we put in a bill that allows nurses, practitioners to be able to dispense the medication to make it easier and accessible for people, we put in a bill that allows for a loved one who takes the training to be able to go and get the injection, because it can, you can easily save a life, okay? Another bill I put in actually calls for a pilot program at camps, at day camps, with EpiPens. EpiPens, you know, if you are allergic, let's say, to food, bee sting, it can save your life in a matter of minutes. So we have a pilot program to allow the workers, if they get certified by the Department of Health and get a permission and do the paperwork, to be able to administer that. I also put in a couple bills that deal with pharmacists, and it allows them to be able to have a collaborative agreement, which is a contract with the doctors, to be able to help people. As you know, a lot of the pharmacists are in our local communities, and a lot of elderly people go to the pharmacy, okay? They don't go, it's a lot easier to go and talk to that pharmacist and say, "Hey, these are my symptoms, what do you think?" So this allows them to work with the doctors. I also put in a bill that says that a pharmacist is able, by law, to be able to touch and self-administer, for example, the injections for diabetes, or a drop, which now the law prohibits that. If an elderly person came and said, "Look, can you administer the drops in my eye, or can you help me, you know, with my insulin?" They were prohibited by law from doing that. So we put in, we passed that bill as well. As you can see, we were pretty busy, and one last bill that I think you need to know, if you know anyone who is delinquent under taxes, we passed a bill, House Bill 1233, that basically requires penalties and interest due on delinquent taxes. If people settle them between, there's an amnesty period that we created, the amnesty period is the following, September 1st to October 31st. If you owe taxes, but if you are able to go ahead and will reduce the penalties and the interest if you pay them during that period, September 1st and October 31st in the state of Maryland, and that is House Bill 1233, okay? We have, I can share a lot more, but we're going to allow you to ask your questions. As you see, we were pretty busy with the environment, with health, with public safety, with education, we were able to fully fund education, okay? We fully funded education, and it's up to the governor whether he wants to do it or not. The Purple Line as well, we're very supportive, it would reduce a lot of that traffic on Route 1, because it would have three stops at the University of Maryland, it is up to the governor whether he's going to fully fund it. The federal government has actually allocated over $900 million for the Purple Line, and if we don't take advantage of that, someone, another state will take it, all right? So we're urging him to be, to fully fund it as well, okay? Thank you so much for your attention, we really appreciate you. Sorry, Jim, I took a little long.
Oh, no, no, that was great. In fact, I want to mention two other things that you reminded me by going down the list. One is, we passed a bill that will allow the prosecutors, when they find, when someone is charged with financial fraud, and particularly, financial frauds aimed at the elderly. What often happens is, they charge the person with fraud, they convict them of fraud, but by the time the trial is over, the money is like someplace else. And so this bill we passed will allow them to freeze the assets of the folks who are charged, so they can't abscond with what money is there. If, you know, if they end up being innocent, they end up being innocent, but if they end up being guilty, we have tools to get the money back to the people who were defrauded. So that, I think that's a very important and useful, these legislation. The other thing I was going to mention that does relate to Laurel, it's not a specific Laurel item, but we passed a bill to make the State Commission on Climate Change a permanent agency, to be looking not just at what we can do to reduce climate change, but also, as importantly, how we can mitigate the effects of climate change. You may not have noticed, we had snow beginnin' a couple of years ago, you may not have noticed we had the derecho, you may not have noticed we have some rainstorms like we'd ever had before. So these are effects of climate change, and so when the bill came before us, I talked about the flooding in Laurel caused by the opening of the dam. Having talked with the folks at Department of the Environment and WSSC, that the fact that the water level of the dam is going up more quickly than the past clearly is related to climate change, I mean, there's no argument about that. And so I got this bill amended to make clear that when we're looking at the effects of climate change and how to mitigate them, we need to look at things like our dam here in Laurel, and not just the sea level on the eastern shore, as important as the sea level on the eastern shore is. So let me stop there, and let's just open it up for questions. Just raise your hand, and I think this gentleman will come to you. Yes, sir? And if folks can identify themselves, their name, and maybe what community in Laurel they live in, or whatever.
Wilbur Nicholson from Law Boys and Girls Club slash Cherry Lane Boxing. And I'm concerned about the health and welfare for our youth in the community, and nobody's talking about any of that. And I happen to be now the vice president at Law Boys and Girls Club. And we just had an incident where people are trying to take the club from the kids. We house almost 4,000 kids in that program. Now, me being a citizen of Prince George County for 61 years, I've been in this town, Laurel, and I've seen all the changes. I can remember when the only place we had to go to school was the Grove School on 8th Street. Now, they've taken that land because they're building a library. Now, they're coming on up, on up to the old Laurel High School, which is the Boys Club. Kids don't have anywhere to go. Kids don't have, you know, look at what happened in Baltimore. All this rioting and, you don't hear of that in Laurel, because we take the kids in whether they can afford to pay or not, and we do everything we can to make sure that these kids are in a safe haven. Now, the arning on the building, it looks sad, but that's the oldest high school in Prince George County. It's on the National Historic Society. Somebody needs to step up and give us a hand in getting this place restored. I mean, it's, look, I grew up in that club, I started in that club in 1964. My kids came up through that club, my grandkids are coming up through that club now, and I can call all the leaders throughout Maryland in the last 20 years that came up through that Boys and Girls Club. And I don't know why anyone would want to turn their back on us and not give us grant money to get this place going forward and get it restored to where it should be. I understand what the past administration did, but we got new people in there now that has got good credibility, and I'm one of them, and I've been here all my life. And I just hope that the state will come and reach out to us. We've talked to the governor, he has said that he would look into it. I talked to Reshern Baker, and he had, you know, he told me flat out, "I trust you," you know? And what we're doing is, we're putting, you know, rules and things in place now that what took place prior won't happen again. And not only the last administration, the administration before that, you know, it's just, it's been terrible. But to say, "No, we're not going to give you any grant money to help fix this place up." I get out there every day, cut grass, I'm cutting ivory down on the side of the buildings myself, you know, and it's volunteer work. Adrian Russo, which is the vice, is the president now, we get out there and work together, side by side. And we're trying to bring this back, and we just hope that the state will reach out to us, and, you know, try, so these kids will have a place to go. We don't want to see another Baltimore in Laurel.
So basically, I will go ahead and answer it. So since you're new on the board, I'll tell you a little background. We, the state, and myself, with the support of my colleagues, we have given the Boys and Girls Club almost $1 million. Just like you have needs, there are other, the way we decide what bond bills, because there's not enough money, right? This year, we got what? Nothing. What did we get? Just the extension?
We got the extension.
Just the extension, no money, because there's no money. So basically, in the past, we have always put in the bills for the Laurel Boys and Girls Club, but this year, there was no money. The bills that we put for College Park was an extension of money that were going to expire in the bill for Laurel. For Boys and Girls Club, we've given you almost $1 million. So, no, let me finish. So basically, that came from the state, and we are very supportive, and I've been there, I, from the prior administration, I told them, you know, you need to apply for grants, I put them in touch for Reshern's office, with the Councilwoman's office, it was Tom Danoga, then Mary Lehman's office, I put them in touch with, when Patrick was there, okay, with Hoyer, with all the federal, because the state cannot do it alone, okay? There's so many needs. Yes, but what I'm saying is, since you're there, you need to not just come to the state as well, because it's not like we haven't been with you, we've given you $1 million. You have to go work with the county, you have to work with the city, you have to work with the federal government, you have to get, and I talked to the board before, and I said, "You must get someone who is trained and can write grants, okay, to different private organizations as well." I went as far as contacting the governor's office, because they have a grant writing office, to see if there was an interest in someone being trained and taking the course, but there was never that interest. I'm glad that you're there now, but I want to tell you that we've been working with the organization for a while now.
Miss, I know what the past has been with that club, I've been around that club for the last 50 years, okay? And I know that people have came forward and helped the club out, okay? The club is on its back now. We're starting off fresh with new people, new competent people, and to say, "No, don't give them any money." Perfect example, the Laurel Armory, okay? They've had a block grant for the last, I don't know how many years, okay? Nobody uses the Laurel Armory. Kids use our gym, wait a minute, well, the seniors do, okay? But what about these kids? I mean, do anybody in here have kids or grandkids?
Sir. We agree with you that all of us in the, in the community need to support activities for kids as well as for senior citizens. As Delegate Penny Melick pointed out, the state has already put in almost $1 million into the club. I know you're talking with the city, I know you're talking with the county, we're happy to work with everyone.
Absolutely.
Around a plan that everybody can support to do what needs to be done. So thank you for what you're doing, and thank you for coming here today.
Yeah, and all I'm saying is that we all need to work, like, we can't just put it on us, because, you know, so we, but we're willing, because we have a record of having helped and done it, and we're willing to do that.
But I mean, it's only the oldest building in Laurel.
Yeah, we get that.
We totally, I mean, I've been all through that building myself, we totally understand that, so thank you for what you're doing, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, sir?
Water usage. Because the SSS provides water for the company, is there a way in which we can monitor on an online basis what the usage is in our home?
It's a good question. No, I totally, yeah, 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 yeah.
If you know everything, and some of us might be surprised, but for them, why does If you fill every month, and some of us might be surprised, like, for example, I just got my bill, my water usage is 70 gallons a day. They just charge me for 900 gallons a day. My water bill went from 7,000 gallons to 92,000.
You look very clean. You look very clean.
Actually, it was the equivalent of filling up the Laurel Pool four times.
I understand. Well, let me, let me just, let me just respond to that a couple of different ways. One is, good question, and I've never really asked that question of WSSC, and so we will do that.
Yes, many, but not that one.
Well, I just haven't asked that question, but I'm gonna, we're gonna talk to the WSSC about that, Maureen, if you could make a note of that.
I wanna, I wanna know, I'd like to be able to go online.
I totally get it.
And see what my water usage is.
It's, it's a great question. The second part of the answer is, you're not the only person who has gotten this kind of bill. I mean, we had the College Park Swim Club that had a huge problem exactly like this. We had a business owner on Main Street here in Laurel had exactly the same issue. And on those occasions, we did go to WSSC. And I have to say, WSSC does not have a good system for dealing with problems like this. And we had legislation this year that didn't get through, it came out of Montgomery County, didn't, it didn't get out of one of the delegation, it didn't get to the Senate delegation in Prince George, because I would've supported it if it had gotten there. Basically, to set up a new customer complaint structure within WSSC, because the one they have right now is a disaster.
Well, what's interesting, you know, with, with Baltimore Gas and Electric, with your electric usage, periodically, you will get a statement from them which says, here's what your usage is compared to people, your neighbors. So it's automated, you know, they are.
I mean, SSC is behind in a variety of ways. We're gonna, we're gonna push this one. So thank you for raising it with us. Yes, sir? I fully introduced myself, I didn't ask, I, I know who you are, but for everybody else. Great, thanks. Yes, sir?
My name is Mark Thomas, and I'm from South Laurel. And you all are aware of Prince George's County, it's a 15% increase.
Yep.
The real estate guys. So this is what I'm hearing, so one of the very useful questions for us, well, why in the world do we have to increase our property taxes based on the arguments they just made? What happens to all the state properties like the casinos? Well, the casinos is probably more.
Billion point three million dollars in total revenue.
That's gross, yeah, that's not what the state's getting. That's not what the state's getting. The winners get a lot of that money.
Right, so about half of it goes to the state, roughly, right?
Yeah, something like that, something like that. Less than that, it's like six, five, 600 million, yep, yep.
So the people here in Prince George's County are all saying, well, why are we having to pay anything more for our property taxes? In fact, why shouldn't our property taxes be going down as a result of all this income coming in from the casinos?
Okay.
And so, I understand there's a formula that goes on in the Senate and delegate, and I'd like to understand a little bit more about that. Why isn't the money coming to Prince George's County?
I'll give you, I'll give you the short version. The money dedicated to education from the casinos is in fact going to education and is coming to the county. I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but there's a formula, and it, it's, it's actually coming, point number one. Point number two is, because the state understandably wants to make sure, well, because education is a joint state and local responsibility. And basically, 100% of the school's board's budget comes from the county and the state. A little bit comes from the federal government, but mostly comes from county and state. And so, some counties are wealthier than other counties. Some counties, people are willing to pay for schools more than other counties. And so the state understandably wants to make sure that when the state money comes, the locals are doing their share. And we represent some of Anarundel County as well, and Anarundel County is a wealthier county than Prince George's County, but it also is one that is investing less of its own money in education. So there's something called maintenance of effort, which is the requirement that as the state money comes, the county has to maintain its own investment. So that's the reason why, when we get more state money for education, the money goes into education rather than to tax cuts at the county level. So that's the answer to that question.
Yeah, but there's also, there's something else, is that apparently, they're trying to keep in equilibrium the students in Western Maryland, the students in Eastern Maryland, the students in PG, everybody's trying, they're trying to get all the state students to a certain level, at my understanding.
Basically, yes.
But I still don't understand, if we're getting $500 million at a minimum into our pocket, that's even before National Harbor is built, and by the way, test scores are going up, why are we asked to having to pay more for our property taxes?
Okay, well, I, I'm, I'm not here in a position, Jocelyn can jump in in a minute, but I certainly am not here in a position to explain the county executive's proposal. I'm not that, I'm not familiar, I mean, I've studied, I've listened to it, I've looked at it like you have. I got questions about it myself, but I'm not, I'm not.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Capable of making the case for that proposal. And he's very capable of making it, and I think he's got some good arguments, but there are a lot of questions.
You know, the reason why you're not seeing sort of, so this is the way it works. That money from the casino is not in addition to what the state would've paid. It's a substitute. You follow what I'm saying? It's not a dedicated fund. So it's not like the state was gonna continue to pay X, and plus, here you come, this extra money from the casino. It's in addition to, because it goes into the general fund.
Right.
That's right, and that's what a lot of people don't, that's right. That's right. So that is the reason, I mean.
And it's not going to the schools.
It is going to the schools.
It is, it is. The money from the casino will go to the schools, but it's not like the state is continuing to, as Jim says, you know, we, we wanted to see, to share, we wanted the county and the state to share the responsibility. But it wasn't a dedicated fund, they said, okay, you're gonna, this extra amount coming from the casino, plus the state will continue at this level here. We kinda tried to balance it. And in Prince George's County, the state contributes a billion dollars is what I think, and then the county is 600 and something thousand. That's the way that it's worked.
If you took all the money, net money the state gets in, pardon me.
Yeah, go ahead.
If you took all the net money that the state had gotten in from the casinos, and for people like you and me, 500 million sounds like a lot of money, that would only pay half of the state contribution to the Prince George's Schools for one year. Which just shows you that the scale of this. And the point that Jocelyn's making is right, is that the state made a commitment back in 2002 to do exactly what you said, was to try to raise the quality of education for kids all over the state, to make the funding of education more equal, frankly, for counties that are, that are lower income than others, like Prince George's County. Prince George's County is a huge beneficiary compared to other counties, because our, our wealth base is not what a Montgomery or Howard is. And so the legislature, this is before Jocelyn and I got there, passed a law requiring exactly how much money needed to go to each county. What we neglected to do was to pass the revenue sources to pay for the money to go to education. And that's why, when, in 2007, we, we had a projection of a billion dollar out-year projected deficits, because we'd committed to invest the money in education, we just hadn't said how to pay for it. And that's how the whole casino thing came up, and that's how making the income tax more progressive. It was to pay bills that we'd already committed to.
And if I may, under the governor's initial proposed budget, Prince George's County was gonna lose $39 million, okay? And in Montgomery, something like $40 million, Anarundel, something like, you know, $10 million. And before we adjourned, we actually were able to fully fund that, and that's how we left it.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Yeah, it's a very long answer. No, thank you for coming and raising it. And everybody's, everybody has questions, they're reasonable questions. Other topics, other questions? Yes, ma'am?
I, I was wondering about the state about the stormwater.
Sure.
And it only affects nine towns, right?
Yes.
In Baltimore City.
In Baltimore, county.
Okay. But the state, but the state passed a law requiring this?
It's a federal requirement.
The requirement for cleaning up the pollution is a federal requirement. The state, as part, it gets complicated quickly, is, you got the Federal Clean Water Act, federal law, and the federal government sort of delegates the state, has for 60 years, a lot of the details of how you do it. So there's continuing agreements between the federal government and the state government on how we're gonna meet our responsibilities under the Clean Water Act. So it's a federal requirement, how to do it, we then come up with proposals, we work those out with the federal government. So what the state did was to say, the counties, these, these major counties, where most of the stormwater comes from, in the urban corridor, need to invest more in cleaning up stormwater pollution. And so, they were given explicit authority to have a dedicated fee to be able to do it. And so they enact the fee, they structure the fee, they collect the fee, and they spend the money. Is that helpful?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Going once, going, yes, please?
One stormwater, the man who's off the phone. One stormwater, and then he's got a message that no longer, no longer, it's blocking the city, so I'm very impressed. It's made.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, go for it.
There's an easy answer to that question. Under the old law that we changed this year, the state required the counties to do the cleanup and to pay for it with this fee. The law we passed this year took away the requirement that the county has to use this fee to pay for the cleanup, but it keeps the law and strengthens it, they still have to do the cleanup. So the counties have the option to keep the fee, change the fee, or eliminate the fee.
They have the flexibility.
Okay, can you do that with, can you go with the family to do it?
My, my impression is that they and most of the other counties are not intending to eliminate the fee.
But the person to call for that is Adam Ortiz. Yeah, call Adam, and Adam, because he's the one that is structuring the program, and he'll be able to tell you what he's doing with that. And every county's gonna do something different, and it's nine counties in Baltimore City.
And one thing, when you talk to Adam Ortiz at Department of the Environment, Prince George's has, and he can explain to you better than I can, but they've created a structure where they will actually do the work in terms of improving, improving the stormwater control on private property owners' sites, particularly in big places like Victoria Falls and the American Legion. And then that will create credits against the tax to reduce people's taxes.
What they have is, you have, they have permission from the county to do public services, or a, a rate bill, or what have you.
Right.
And you can basically get a new state, that's what you're definitely gonna have.
Right. But they also, for bigger entities like, for churches, I know definitely for churches, they have big parking lots, the county now, this new program, will actually go out, inspect the site, figure out what kind of improvements would help, pay the money to actually do the improvements, if they think they're, they can make a significant impact. It's actually, it's actually a very cool thing to be able to reduce the fees that folks are paying.
And you know, if I may say, and we represent, you know, two counties, but Prince George's County has been extremely thoughtful and balanced, and it's Adam's leadership who's doing that. Like, he tried to be fair and just to people, to the churches, to businesses, and do it in a way that is not so burdensome.
Okay, thank you.
Our pleasure, our pleasure.
Yes, sir. Would you identify yourself, please?
Um, I'm.
Where in Laurel?
Victoria Falls.
Victoria Falls?
No.
No?
Bellamy.
Bellamy, I know Bellamy, absolutely, great. That's terrific.
It's pretty familiar.
Was it you saying, like, it's, it's, uh, making, uh, any, uh, public program in the state now?
Yes.
We got that one that they're saying, uh, eight, three.
Yes.
Do you have all these files?
Yes.
Well, can you do something about?
Well, we've been trying for a long time. The legislative staff have been very critical of those tax credits. And.
How many, how many millions of dollars are involved?
Well, it varies by year. I don't know what the number is for this year, but it's millions of dollars, it's not hundreds of millions of dollars. I mean, it, it's, it's, it's nothing like, I mean, the big money we invest in education. But there's, there are serious questions about whether it really makes any sense, because you have, I don't know, 25, 30 other states that give exactly the same credits. So it's not like anything's happening other than just reducing the taxes on the movie industry, so.
I've seen serious analysis by capable people that most of that money goes to Hollywood.
Well, I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I know, I know a lot of it does, when they make the movie in Maryland, a lot of money's spent in Maryland. I think that is definitely true, and that's the argument for it, is that if any other, like any other tax credit we give people in high tech or R and D or biotechnology.
There was a lot of testimony about that.
Yeah, that, that it, that it does create jobs, and it obviously creates some jobs, but whether the juice is worth the squeeze, as you might say, I think is another question.
The big jobs are in Hollywood, and then the Hollywood people give the money to their political friends.
Well, I don't know about that, but I know that, I know it's very, it's a very controversial provision, it's a very, and appropriately so.
I would hope you'd oppose it.
No, no, I, I mean, we've been trying to, to do it, but it got majority support both, both times. I mean, last year, there was a fight about it, this year, there was a fight about it, next year, I'm sure there'll be a fight about it. So I appreciate you raising it. It's, it's good to know constituents are concerned about that. Other questions?
Very close to the law, sir. Uh, I just have a question. First of all, hey, you're up, it's a great question, you've got some great news.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very sponsored by, by Alex, by the city of Laurel.
Thank you.
I have a, a loop.
Idea that I'd like to get your thoughts on. One of the things that you're seeing is, we're, we're benefiting from it here in the Laurel City, is there's a growth of apartment buildings. You can't walk anywhere around here. Lot of residential development going on in this side of the city, and to the west. Big employment opportunities happening east of the Parkway at Fort Meade with DISA, NSA. I know you probably saw, if you've come down 198, past the old Tishers, that whole hillside is gonna be another national business park and all that. One of the issues is, I live six miles from the front gate of NSA when I was working. I could've easily ridden a bicycle, but I'm not, there is no good way to get a bicycle from where all these residences are to where all that employment is. And with the good work, I rode the train, I love it, we, we like having the additional trains, but it would sure be nice to have, if you could just get a study, if next year or the year after, I know it takes a while for these things to get MVA, the, the transportation folks to think about, but if we could get some sort of a bicycle study of what would be the best way to get a bicycle from Columbia, Laurel, Belksville.
That's a fantastic idea.
I've chatted with Delegate Barnes a few years ago about this. Ben was on board, but, you know, he got busy. But if we could just get a study, I think that would be really beneficial.
We can, you know, Jim can put it in the House, I can put it in, Jim can put it in the Senate, I can put it in the House, we're switching jobs here.
I'd appreciate it. I mean, I think if we got a study, and then we'll see where we go. I mean, a lot of people have talked about a bridge over the Parkway, I don't know what that kind of stuff costs, but there may be some cheaper way to do it.
It's a great idea. Is this on this topic, Mike?
It is. That might be a practice, it might be a practice, but as you know, there's a 197 all the way to the restoration site. They're always starting the construction on both sides.
That's great.
It might be a practice, and, 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 and.
It's a, it's a, it's a very, it's a very, very good idea. For those who don't know him, that's Councilman Mike Lesz with the City of Laurel.
I mean, the whole bracket, you know, Anarundel County.
Absolutely. It's a, it's a great idea, we'll, we'll pursue it. I want to make a couple of comments. One is, I sponsored a bill this year that passed to require the state highway administration to come to agreement with local governments who have designated priority bicycle and pedestrian areas. I sponsored the bill 25 years ago called Bike Ped 2000 to get state highway. They weren't even willing to do, pay for bike lanes on state roads 25 years, 20 years ago, and they've come a long way. But we wanted to take another step forward. So, actually, the City of Laurel could be helpful to, to this conversation, because we gave you a little more power with state highway. Obviously, this goes across counties, so it's not just a City of Laurel issue, so we got to get both counties involved. That's point number one. Point number two is, I actually had a meeting on Saturday with the, the bike leadership of Anarundel County, dealing with the issue of how do people get into the other side of Fort Meade? It's the same problem. And one good thing is that there, there is a, basically, a gate that had been closed for years that the fort has now opened up on the Anarundel side, so people who live in Piney Orchard, those areas, are in fact able to bike that way into Fort Meade. So, we deserve equal treatment on this side of Fort Meade, and I'm all for pursuing it, and we will look into it. So, thank you. Other questions? I want to keep you all night, but go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
..............................................................................................................................